Loving God, Heavenly Father, we do come to you in the name of Messiah, in the name of Yeshua HaMashiach, in the name of Jesus. In the name and as above every name, Lord, we just thank you so much that you've allowed us to enter into the Holy of Holies because of what Jesus did. But, Lord, we know that there's not anything that you can't do. And as Father God, we're just asking for your leadership by guidance of the Holy Spirit during these proceedings. I thank you for each and everyone here, Lord God, that you have given them authority, that they are here because of you. They would not be here if it not be for you. It's who you have in authority. And, Father God, we just thank you for the responsibilities that they've taken on, not only for themselves and their own personal lives and families, but in the people and the lives of this county, Lord. We just thank you for that. For God, we do lift up and we're in agreement with those folks that have perished. And, Lord, we're just asking for miracles down south there in Guadalupe, Lord, and Curville and all that area. That, Father God, up there, we're just asking for miraculous recovery still, Lord, not just with bodies, but, Lord, we're just asking for those that are just still clinging to a tree or whatever it is. We're just asking for your comfort and your peace that only can come from you, Lord, for each family member. And, Lord, it's just the devastation is just so vast. And, Lord, it's just really difficult to know how to pray and what to pray for these folks, Lord, because we know that it's something. If there's any comfort, if there's any peace, it can only come from you, and that's what we're asking for. Or we just ask you just lead, God. Lord Jesus, you are our example, and that you only did what the Father told you to do, and you only said what the Father told you to say. And, Lord, I just ask that we would, that you would be our example in our daily walk with you, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite. Further any additions, deletions, or comments?
Hearing none, Judge. I move we approve the Commissioner's Court minutes of the regular session July 1, 2025 as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and second by Commissioner Stavey to approve the minutes of July the 1st, 2025 as presented. All those in favor of the motion passes unanimously. Item number two is consider and take action on order of election for governor ordered or county ordered measure elections on November 4th, 2025. Ms. Leckie.
Good morning, Court. I bring to you the order of a special election for November 4th for the constitutional amendments. Currently, there are 17 proposed amendments on the ballot. We are, do have a special session going right now, so there may be another. We'll have to amend this later. But I wanted to set our early voting dates and times and locations because we have to give that to our cities and schools that are contracting with us, and they do that during their July meetings. So there is one significant change with our early voting. We have moved to Gunbarrel City Hall over on the west side. Seven Point City Hall is still under construction, so. But that's all I am. We'll be early voting at the office. The extended hours are the last two days of early voting, seven to seven, and there's no weekend voting required for this election.
Court, questions?
So we're going to be voting at the Elections Office?
Yes.
Location?
For early voting. Election Day will be at the Texan.
Election Day at the Texan.
That's already reserved. Yes, sir.
First, the First Methodist Church in Chandler, Leroux Complex, and Gunbarrel City Hall.
Yes.
And I see that we have an additional, it's 30 to 31st. What is that up forward?
It's Monday through Friday both weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
It's just different on the one here in Athens, our main early voting location, because we have to have the extended hours the last two days, so.
12 hours.
Yes, the 12 hours.
Okay.
Court, questions, comments? Entertained a motion.
I make the motion to approve the order of election for the governor ordered or county ordered measure elections on November 4th, 2025.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the order of election for the governor ordered or county ordered measure elections on November 4th, 2025 as presented. All those in favor of the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item three is consider and take action on the adoption of a patrol K-9 provided by the American Valor Foundation and trained by K-9 Global Training Academy for the Sheriff's Office. Sheriff?
Good morning, Court. David Robertson, one of our K-9 handlers, has been promoted from deputy to lieutenant in the jail. And, of course, his partner is K-9 Con. And Con's getting up in age. He's probably, might have a good year left in him. And with that being said, normally when we do this, when somebody promotes, we transfer the dog to another handler and send them back to school. But due to Con's age, I didn't want to stress him out. So Lieutenant Robertson is keeping Con, and Con will basically be on call for anything if the other K-9 handlers can't get to it. Or it's nice to have a dog there in the jail, too, so he can do jail searches and stuff like that. So we were needing another K-9, and the American Valor Association or Foundation has graciously said that they would sponsor a dog if we would adopt the dog. And it'll be trained by K-9 Global Training Academy. We've received, this will be the, we've already had four K-9s come from Global Training Academy. They're, do excellent work, train excellent dogs. It'll be a dual-certified. He'll do search and rescue, apprehensions, and then narcotics detection. The, it'll be Deputy Jonathan Dolly will be the deputy that will be the new K-9 handler, and he will be scheduled to go to school if the court approves this within the next couple of weeks, and then he'll be down there for about five to six weeks training. And Global is in Somerset, Texas, just outside of San Antonio.
Court, questions?
So Con going on reserve status?
Kind of sort of.
Yes, sir.
How long have you had him?
We got him in 2017. He was two years old at the time, but he's getting along in the tooth. He's turning gray, and still, we actually had to use him the other day on a manhunt. And he's got about 15 minutes of stamina, and then you're going to have to put him up, so.
Yeah.
Court, comments, questions?
Besides him, and then if this one is approved, how many dogs do we have?
We've got, of course, the new bomb dog, Atticus. Then we've got Valco, and then Con, and then this will be the new one. And they've got a couple of dogs down there at Global now they're training. They won't make a decision on which one we get. They'll both be Mal, I think one of them's Malinois, one of them's a Dutch Shepherd Cross, but they won't, we won't know what dog we're getting until they get down there and meet Dolly, because Global Training Academy basically pairs the dog and the handlers together, which I think is best. Instead of just saying, this is your dog, and this is what you're going to have to handle, they look at both personalities and try to pair the team together.
Con, the second dog that we got?
We got Max and Con together.
Max and Con?
Yes, we got Benny. I was actually the K-9 handler that handled Benny from Global Training Academy when I was a deputy. And then when I became sheriff, we ended up starting the K-9 program again, because Benny had already retired, and we got Max and Con together.
Max and Con.
Court, further questions, comments? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Tulley to approve the adoption of a patrol K-9 provided by the American Valor Foundation and trained by K-9 Global Training Academy for the Sheriff's Office as presented. Any further discussions? All those in favor passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you, Sheriff. Item four is consider and take action on interlocal agreement between the city of Brownsborough and Harrison County Precinct 3 Road and Bridge. Commissioner?
Yes, this is the standard interlocal agreement that we've been doing for the cities, and it's a four-year proposal at no more than $5,000 a year. And that's mainly just for, you know, they need us to come in with a boom, ax, and mo, and they need to put a culvert in, or, you know, some of the smaller stuff that we can do to stay within that money amount.
Court, questions?
It is handy working with the municipalities just to pick up the phone.
Yeah.
There's nothing further, will entertain a motion.
I'd like to move to approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Brownsborough and Henderson County Precinct 3 Road and Bridge with the Commissioner's signature.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Stavey to approve the interlocal cooperation agreement with the city of Brownsborough with county commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor passes unanimously. Item six is receive financial reports. Oh, sorry. Five, consider and take action to amend the Road and Bridge Precinct 3 personnel budget to change foreman position to operator 2 position. Commissioner?
Yes, we all know during budget last year, we put superintendents in. I would like to have a, another road equipment operator 2 position, and I'm not planning on filling this foreman position. Whoever comes in behind me might, might put this back in later on down the road, but I don't plan to fill the foreman position. My supervisor, I mean, my superintendent is my shop manager, you know, so he, I don't need a foreman and a superintendent, too. So I'd like to move that position, and don't foresee me adding that back.
Court, questions? Hearing none.
I'd like to move that we approve the amendment to the personnel budget to change precinct 3 foreman position to a precinct 3 operator 2 position.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Richardson to amend the Road Bridge Precinct 3 personnel budget to change the foreman position to operator 2 position as presented. Any further discussions? All those in favor passes unanimously. Now item number six, which is receive financial reports. And we have this month's financial reports for the judiciary. They will be available for viewing after court if anyone wishes to do so. Item number seven, consider and take action on payroll distributions at accounts cash sheet, which we have none. Item eight is consider and take action on submitted contracts, and there are none. Item number nine is consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits. Commissioner?
Yes, Court, this is with East Cedar Creek Freshwater. There was an emergency service on a 3/4-inch service line that was crossing the road for a road crossing repair at 110 Caribbean Circle. And you have the pictures and everything in the backup.
Court, questions for the Commissioner?
Hearing none, Judge. I move we approve the proposed utility line activity for East Cedar Creek Water for an emergency 3/4-inch service line, road crossing repair at 110 Caribbean Circle with the Commissioner's authorization to sign.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and second by Commissioner Stavey to approve the right-of-way agreement with East Cedar Creek Freshwater Supply District for emergency repair and line road crossing repair, 110 Caribbean Circle in Maybank. Any further, with the Commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor passes unanimously.
Thanks, Court.
Item 10, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. Ms. Monk?
I have those today for approval. Mostly are things actions that have arisen from the contingency fund.
Court, questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the budget amendments as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Stavey and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the budget amendments as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor passes unanimously. Item 11, consider and take action on payment of bills. Ms. Carpenter?
I have fiscal year 2025 in the amount of $46,787.88.
Commissioner Stavey, questions?
No questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tulley?
I have none.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 bills in the amount of $46,787.88 as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Stavey to approve the bill in the amount of $46,787.88 as presented. All those in favor of the motion passes unanimously. Item 12, consider and take action on submitted plats.
We have two, the one in precinct 2 and precinct 4, and all these are paid.
Commissioner Tulley?
Yes, Court, I might have to ask Mr. Strom to come up. This is a replat in the Hidden Hills Harbor subdivision of lots 300 through 305 in Section C. I believe they're taking six lots and combining them into two. And one of the lots that they're creating is Lot 305-R, and that's the one that I would like Mr. Strom to talk to us about.
Good morning, Court. Looking at this replat proposal, you can see that that Lot 7, or I'm sorry, Lot 305-R, the acreage on that is 0.07 acres. So looking at the face of this submission, the affected property owner has signed off on it, the HOA has signed off on it, and Tarrant Regional Water has signed off on it. So on its face, it's, it's okay. Some of the issues stem from any future proposed development on it. If you look at the deed restrictions of Hidden Hills Harbor, any kind of use on that proposed Lot 305-R would need to be for the property owner, so they couldn't just rent that out or lease it out to someone else. There's a 900 square foot residential restriction. Whether that could fit on that acreage or not is questionable, and then whether or not there could be septic or any kind of sewer or water supply there. There's an idea that maybe a garage or detached building might go there. There are some limitations with that under the deed restrictions. They have to be for the sole owner of that property, and they have to be approved by the Architectural Committee for the subdivision. And no garage shall be erected or any kind of building on any lot before residence is constructed thereon. And so if there ends up being a detached building, it has to be associated with a proper residence. And so there's some issues on what this tiny lot could be used for in the future. But on the face of the plat, it's been approved by the affected landowner, the HOA and Tarrant Regional. So it's, I think, capable of being approved by the court. It's just there may be an unusable lot there that the HOA would have to consider for any future development that would potentially violate the deed restrictions.
Does it have a public sewer or is it on-site sewer in that subdivision?
Down at the bottom, it does say central sewer is available, and no on-site sewer facility will be permitted. You know, my questions have been all the time is, is that we're talking about what's happening right now. We're not talking about five years down the road when they decide to sell, and then the new person comes in and builds a two-story garage with living quarters upstairs and a bathroom and that kind of stuff. So do we have anything as the county that we can make it to where they can't do that? Because would that be violating some of our subdivision regulations and our, say, lot size for anything?
As presented, no. Couldn't tackle that hypothetical with our current subdivision regulations. Where we could is if Tarrant Regional hadn't signed off on it, then that would be pretty easy. But with them signing off on it, it's hard to prevent what would happen in the future. That would be the responsibility of the HOA and the deed restrictions to enforce that. But it does beg the question, what can this lot be used for? What's the purpose of it? And so that question remains, why you would have that tiny lot carved out. But it is a kind of a future question, so.
Well, in his informational application, he says he needs one smaller lot.
There was nothing on the face of the application I saw problems with. I had heard that maybe at one point there was a discussion about it being a garage, maybe for a third party. I don't think that would be allowed by the HOA based on their deed restrictions. And so if that were denied, I don't know if they would just leave this lot empty at that point or try to submit a different idea, or if the HOA would grant a variance to their deed restrictions. That's not something we could approve, but the HOA maybe has that ability. They have different mechanisms of voting and how they handle those things.
Well, I know that we have also done a deal where when something happens on the west side, it starts happening on the east side, or, so my deal is, is that has this kind of deal cut up been done before? This small or a little bit bigger? Man, I just don't understand why the guy wouldn't just sell one whole lot.
I don't fully know the answer to that. I have seen other lots that are tiny. I don't know if they were approved by the court or if they were unplatted subdivisions or unfilled subdivisions, but I have seen lots of tiny size in the county, and most of them are undeveloped.
Mr. Strom, does the proposed lot size in of itself, based on our subdivision regulations for TCEQ requirements, does it meet the standard?
Because Tarrant Regional has signed off on it, apparently it's okay. We, the county can only do lot size if it affects septic. So since it has been approved for, it's not septic, but for sewerage.
For everyone else's edification, Tarrant Regional controls septic inspections within 1,000 feet, if I remember correctly, the shoreline of Cedar Creek Lake. So therefore, it falls upon Tarrant Regional as the governing in the realm of the septic.
That's correct. So the county can regulate for that limited purpose. If they're okay with it, then that kind of takes away the county's ability at that point. And there's some disagreement with that position from other counties. It has been litigated, where the county lost in that litigation, so I don't know if it's a winning argument to pursue that or not, so.
It's biggest is where it comes up, whether it's on-site sewage or a public sewer system.
Right.
What it does, I know a lot of them, a lot of us has had those little small lots like that in our subdivisions that have on-site sewer. But if that subdivision was formed before January the 1st of 1988, they can build on those lots. They're grandfathered in, but they can't go in there and reap blad on it like it's smaller from the day like today, but.
And that was the avenue I was going in my mind on its own in the original, if it was planted prior to 1988.
Original lot.
Right, but we are creating one today or propose to create one today in 2025, so therefore that rule is null and void. Yeah.
If it would've been on-site sewer only, since they got public sewer, that takes that out of equation.
Right, because the old rigs limited lot size based on several different things.
Yes.
Quarter acre was as small as we could go without other infrastructural needs, but I'm assuming that's not the case with changes in law, case law, all the governings where the legislature has loosened up all of these requirements to return us to the 1960s and 70s in development.
They've taken that ability away from the counties, I believe, yes.
Yeah. Commissioner?
There's only 30, the longest side, there's 30 foot of buildable lot depth, 30 feet.
It's not a lot you can do with it. I believe it's on a hill, so.
Well, 40 feet, I'm sorry, 40 feet. Okay.
Judge, I move we approve the replat of Hidden Hills Harbor subdivision, lots 300 through 305, Section C, for a final plat creating Lot 300-R and 305-R for filing purposes only.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the final replat of lots 300 through 305 in Section C of Hidden Hills Harbor subdivision creating lots 300R and 305R. Any further discussion? I will say, at least it's combining, what, six lots, and you get one, almost 3/4 of an acre lot.
It went from six to two, unsubdivided.
Maybe just want to keep it for a picnic area.
Exactly.
Dog park, dog park.
For filing purposes only is the, excuse me, for filing purposes only, I guess, was, needs to be added to that. Any further discussion? All those in favor passes unanimously.
Thanks, Court. Thanks, Mr. Strom. Yes, sir. I can stay up here for the next one.
Commissioner Richardson?
Dog park, 3.
Yes, Court, this is a replat here in the Wagon Tree subdivision. You can see we're taking a big lot and buying it up the opposite of what we're getting here. I did go down and look, there is a, on the survey here, there is already a house on Lot 169-R1, and I got word that there was a house on 169-R2, which is a long there lot. I did go down and look at this place to make sure, because there were no septic permits on 169-R2, which was supposed to be a newer home that's been moved in, a mobile home, and the sewer anything has not been hooked up on it yet. It's just sitting there on blocks. So I was looking to make sure. So I was looking to make sure that they were abided by all the septic rules and stuff. And Danny Wilson has signed off on it, so I don't really see anything wrong with the plat other than some of these that they're dividing up. I don't know if we can require them to put the structures on the plat, if it's already existing or not, where we know more about when they do subdivide these bigger lots like this and they do have structures on them already, because that's the only thing that affects is where the septic system is running, if it's crossing lot lines or not.
So under the normal surveying rules, any kind of man-made structure that is kind of large or apparent on a, on a survey should be depicted. And so I think there is an issue there, especially with these lines. I was just looking at the deed restrictions and I don't, I think it may be a defunct HOA, but there are deed restrictions that they don't ordinarily allow for subdivisions. But when they do allow for subdividing, the minimum acreage was one acre. And so that could be a potential issue with this lot, 169-R2, with it being less than that one acre.
I've done a lot of research in subdivision, had questions of even mobile homes on, there's, I think there's three separate sections. One of their deed restrictions says it, no mobile homes in section three. But if you go back and read some of the other stuff, they went in there amended it that you could put them anywhere at one time. But their deed restrictions, like I said, there's no POA. They allowed a lot of the other, we went in there and done a lot of replats before, but I'm not sure if any of them were under one acre.
One of the confusing points that we deal with all the time is the fact that deed restrictions, county doesn't enforce deed restrictions, that's civil matter. Given that the deed restrictions are on file, are they to be considered?
So the county doesn't enforce deed restrictions, that is a private matter, but the county also doesn't violate deed restrictions. And so I don't believe we can approve this with that deed restriction out there, because then we would be approving a deed restriction. And so even though we don't enforce them, we still abide by them, basically.
Looking at the one we just ended up, we had approval from the associate or the, we, the proposed replat had approval of an HOA giving a blessing.
Correct.
In this case, we do not.
Correct, and so those deed restrictions can still, even outside of an HOA, reside with the landowners there. And so they still have individual suit even without an HOA. The counterargument is if the HOA is defunct or hasn't been enforcing it, then maybe that deed restriction isn't enforceable. But that would be up to a judge or a jury to hear those arguments.
Another thing that brings up, Commissioner Spidey and I went with the Development Office, Joy over in County for a little seminar thing that they had over there a couple of weeks ago. And they had mentioned us, and I don't know if Joy's had you researched or not, that when we do a replat, that we're supposed to do a notice, mail out a notice to people within a certain range of the replat, is what they was telling us. So Joy may remember a little bit more about it, and I do, if you want to speak on it.
Well, we do have a notice requirement in our subdivision regs. Under this type of replat, we have it under an amending revision of a plat. And there's a section in there that says that if the affected property owner for that specific lot line approves it, then the notice is waived. And so since this is affecting this one individual property owner, the way ours is written, it would waive that notice. But that begs the question about notice and who is affected. And there are, within our subdivision regs, notice requirements.
That's what I was wondering, if it was required to do that and you send it out, notice to the neighboring people within a certain range, then that gives them the opportunity, if it does meet their deed restrictions or covenants, they could oppose it or something, you know, so.
Well, what you bring up is our policy as written in that verbiage doesn't require the notice.
Under certain circumstances, it's waived, yes. But we do require it as a default.
As a default, okay. Any further discussion concerning this plat? Entertained a motion? Item 13, for the lack of motion, we'll move on.
And I think the reasoning will be, I want the structures that are on the deal.
Structure and the deed restriction addressed, and we can do a letter.
Should we, given that case, then we'll probably need a motion to reject.
To reject, then?
Is that correct?
There's an approval, disapproval, or conditional.
Is there a clock on a replat? We know there's a clock on the plat.
I think there is, I think the 30-day rule for plats applies to replats because it's a revision of a plat, the way plat is defined in another section. It includes replats or revisions or amendments. And so I think that language, the 30 days, is for all.
Okay, so it appears that having a rejection motion so that we can write the letter and make notification to meet all the time specifications.
I'll make a motion to reject the plat to get the structures, the deed restrictions in line.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner McCam, to reject the replat for lot 69 in the Wagon Tree, in Wagon Tree, section one, with letter to follow. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Mr. Strong, thank you. Item 13 is open and consider bids. Mr. Torres?
Good morning.
Morning.
We have three bid responses this morning. First one is fiscal year 2025 asphalt products. We received responses from Texas Materials, Austin Asphalt, Easy Street Asphalt, Blades Group, Vulcan Materials, Asphalt Patch Enterprises, Brian &amp; Brian Asphalt, and Aggregate Haulers.
Court? Thoughts?
The first one on here, I'm looking at here, there's, for oil sand. There's two, two on here from from Aggregate Haulers with different prices.
I believe it's two different plants that they're getting from.
One of them might be coming out of the Malachol plant, the other one out of Oakwood.
One is out of Oakwood and the other one out of West Plant Tyler, Texas.
West Plant Tyler.
And I believe on the asphalt in a bag, there was one vendor that did 60-pound bags and the other two did 50-pound bags. I highlighted it in there, just want to make sure.
So? Court?
It looks like I probably need to order out with our pickup of asphalt bid, which is like Texas bid, or I call it Texas materials now, Texas materials. Looks like low bidder on a, for cold mix and, which you can get cold mix cheaper at one other place, but the, on the pickup part of it is a long drive to get it. That's a devout in Texas, like I've known or somewhere, so. It doesn't offset the difference on hauling than our hot mix, which comes in at 1:05.
Yeah, because their, their delivery is $164 a ton.
Yeah.
So for pickup of the listed materials, Texas materials, correct?
Texas materials.
What about delivery?
And when we do have on pickup, we do have oil sand from Brian &amp; Brian at a lesser price than what Texas Material has on oil sand. They're 70, 70 a ton, I think, so. I would say we could accept both places on oil sand, Brian &amp; Brian and Texas Material.
Did Brian &amp; Brian as a primary and Texas as a secondary?
Yes.
Do we have to use a low bid as a primary, but since the other one offers the all oil product?
There is, is a difference in the actual product that is distinguishable.
One has rock and one doesn't, so they are a little different. They're a different product. We didn't put any specifications on it or anything, but they are different. One's just oil and sand and the other one's oil, sand, and gravel, so. But one with a more, bigger cost, so.
Okay, that would cover all of the materials on the pickup side. Given that Brian &amp; Brian is only bidding one of the list, so what about the delivery side?
We use Aggregate Haulers to deliver oil sand from Brian &amp; Brian down in Tucker or Oakwood. Say, where are you on our trucks? And sometimes we get it from Texas B to Texas Materials.
Well, there's, the only one that sent a bid in was Aggregate Haulers, wasn't it?
For delivery.
For delivery.
Like you say, it's still really, they're both called oil sand, but they are two different mixtures from different plants. So I don't know, it's, it's just the biggest issue is, is when they're making it. Usually we'll go to one plant and get it because it's handy right here close. But if they're not making it that day and we need it, then we'll, we'll get it from Brian &amp; Brian and down to Tucker.
So it is.
I think we do the Aggregate Haulers for the delivery of oil sand from both plants. No one asked, no one asked for a bid in for delivery.
No, they didn't. And they only put in delivery on oil sand.
Yeah.
Hey, you gonna get your hot mix and?
I was already.
Well, we go get it.
We got a hauling bid too, but this here is where you do it one ticket. You buy them and you don't have to have a PO for both products, just straight through them. They add the hauling into it. But after this, we do have a hauling contract deal, so.
That's, that makes it complicated. You've got one that has bid our specifications on delivery for oil sand, and we have no bids for delivery of the other materials. And that, Ms. Monk or Ms. Davis?
But we're getting, we're doing the hauling bid after this. But the difference would be is we, we're buying, actually, we're buying a product from them delivered, not paying for the hauling, we're just buying a product from Brian &amp; Brian. We're not going through Brian &amp; Brian. We're going through Aggregate Haulers to deliver us a product that they're paying for and picking up. And we go to the hauling bid next, they'll haul anything we want them to haul. And if we wanted to separate it out, say, no, you give us a price on hauling and we'll pay for the product, we can do that in the hauling bid or we can do it this way, by person.
All right. Well, it appears.
So delivery for oil sand that's given to Aggregate Haulers, they're the only ones that bid?
Delivery of oil sand.
Well, it looks, looks to me that on the pickup side of materials and putting it in that form, looks like Aggregate Haulers primary and Brian &amp; Brian secondary. And then for delivery, it's Aggregate Haulers. Can we have a motion?
We'll do the motion separate, we'll depart.
I'd do them all together, since it's on, the bid is all together, but I would mention them.
But what about our bag cold mix? So we want to finish it and prove them all at one time, or you want to do them separate?
You can do the bag mix, the bag as well to, what is that, Easy Street? Who is the little bid?
We usually use Blades Group for the, we like their asphalt and bag.
Sorry?
We use Blades Group, it's a different material than Easy Street.
Are they on the bid list?
Yes, sir.
Blades Group?
Mm-hmm. It's a little bit, it's more expensive, but we really like that one the best.
They've got it on here in bulk, do they have it in here in bag too?
Yes, uh.
50-pound bag.
50-pound bag, $20.
20 bucks.
So given we have a lower bid.
I think we'd have to go with a lower bid, because if they're comparable, it's 50 pounds and 50 pounds, so.
Now, Asphalt Patch is a 60-pound bag. Blades is a 50-pound bag.
It actually looks like Asphalt Patch is the lowest bid.
And I do think.
Has anybody ever used that Asphalt Patch Enterprise?
I've had several and bring different samples, buy stuff. And I don't, I couldn't tell you whose bag who myself, but I know the, we've ordered pallets of it from the Blades Group, but we've always done it under bid, I think they're on the state bid contract.
Yeah, they're on the buy board.
You can buy, you can always buy it through buy board. You can prefer that stuff through the buy board and don't want to go on the bid deal, so.
So we can approve their bid, but we can buy it from Blades on buy board?
I believe that's the case. Because it's the equivalent to having a bid out.
But are we allowed to do that if somebody's low bidder and then it is on the buy board for, can't do it, as long as it's on the buy board, you can buy it, a different product, a different brand?
Has anybody ever used that Asphalt Patch Enterprise? I'm just wondering which one it is. Five bucks cheap.
Ten pound, sixty pound bag.
We have to accept them for low bid on. Asphalt Patch Enterprises. And you can fill it in by board.
Okay. What else on the asphalt bid?
On the hot mix, did we do Texas Material, I believe they're the only ones who's that bid.
Bulk, bulk can bid, but they're, they're way out of range on pricing. Get it here.
To recap kind of what we've discussed, as we said, for pickup would be primary Texas Materials, second would be Brian and Brian, on delivery would be Aggregate Hollers and asphalt, and, or bag asphalt would be Asphalt Patch Enterprises. Any further discussion on this item? Entertained that motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the bids for Texas Materials as number one. For asphalt, coal mix, and bulk, and Brian and Brian. Is number two on, for, for oil sand. Am I correct?
I believe Brian and Brian was.
Brian and Brian.
Brian, Brian, primary for oil sand.
Primary for oil sand.
Yes, sir.
Texas Materials is number one for asphalt product, for asphalt.
Then if, if we're going to break it on, on product, then let's, let's do oil sand.
Let's do oil sand first.
Do oil sand.
I can make a motion to, uh, we're, we're still, Brian and Brian will be number one on oil sand?
Looks like it.
Yeah, number one on oil sand for low bid, and, and Texas Material number two on oil sand.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner McCam, to award the oil sand bid to Brian and, uh, Brian and Brian as primary and Texas Materials secondary. Further discussion?
I have a question, uh, what about, is that mean Aggregate Hollers for the Brian and Brian, and, or is it?
This for pickup.
Okay, is it a hauling?
That'd be on another deal.
On another motion?
Different bid.
Different motion.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor passes unanimously. Now, the remaining materials, which would be Texas Material, which would cover all of the others, correct?
Yes.
Coal mix, hot mix, hot mix, with and without.
Yes.
I'll make the motion for the, uh, to accept the bid from Texas bid for coal mix, hot mix recycled, and hot mix without recycle.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the asphalt materials bid of coal mix, hot mix with recycled, and hot mix without recycle to Texas Materials. Any further discussion? All those in favor passes unanimously. Now.
Now the hauling of oil, oil sand?
Yes. Delivery prices, we have that motion?
I'll make the motion for the delivery of oil sand for Aggregate Hollers to be the primary.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Spivey, to approve the oil sand delivery charges from Aggregate Hollers as presented. Any further discussion? Those in favor passes unanimously. Now, one for bag asphalt.
I'll make the motion for the primary on bag asphalt. To go to asphalt.
EZ Street.
Was it EZ Street Asphalt Patch Enterprises?
Yes, sir.
Asphalt Patch Enterprises for asphalt in a bag.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Richardson to award the asphalt in a bag bid to Asphalt Patch Enterprises. Any further discussion? All those in favor passes unanimously. I think that's got the road material done, right?
Yes, sir.
So the biggest issue of this is to let everybody know is it, it is, it's got worse and in trouble to be able to get material.
Yeah.
And when they're making it, and, and I think I've heard that Texas Material may quit making oil.
Probably. Okay, Mr. Torres?
We have fiscal year twenty twenty-five hauling transport bid, we received three responses from 4M Trucking, Whitney Transportation, and I believe it's Lipsy, Lipsy Logistics.
Me? Court questions, comments? Where is Lipsy out of?
Chattanooga, Tennessee.
Okay. In Whitney?
McKinney, Texas.
Okay. Court?
I always use 4M. And looking at the prices, I think they're, they're, they've got the best rates, 4M does on here, is a.
Court comments? Are we ready for a motion?
I move we accept the bid from Deer Farm and Ranch Services doing business as 4M Trucking.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the hauling bid to 4M Trucking as presented. Any further discussions? All those in favor passes unanimously. Mr. Torres?
Fiscal year twenty twenty-five bulk fuel, we received two responses, one from Eagle Fuel, Rebecca, and one from Gold Star Petroleum.
What's the difference in the rat and, add to the, most, both of these add to the rack price?
Yes.
It's usually the easiest way of doing things. Comments?
Like markup on the Gold Star was thirty-six and a half cents a gallon. And Eagle, fifteen cents.
Fifteen cents.
Yeah. Okay.
Judge, I move we accept the Eagle Fuel and Oil bid for bulk fuel rate.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and second by Commissioner Richardson to award the two thousand twenty-five bulk fuel rate to Eagle Beck, is it Eagle Beckett? Is that the proper name?
It's Eagle Fuel.
Eagle Fuel is presented. Any further discussions?
I do see that, you know, they got in here that twenty cent state sales tax, I think that's going to be, did that pass, is being, going to be removed, or did?
I don't know.
I don't agree with it, so that, that may be a.
I think it did.
I think they passed, but state sales tax will be removed, so, but they just put that in their example, it wasn't part of it.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor passes unanimously. Mr. Torres, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Item fourteen, consider and take action to adjourn.
So move.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and second by Commissioner McCam to adjourn at ten oh two, all those in favor of the motion passes unanimously. Thank you for being with us today.